Good evening, everyone, and welcome to your Miami'sburg City Council meeting. Today's date is February the 18th, 2025. It is 6 o'clock, and we are in Council Chambers Live. For those of you in the audience, I always ask that if you'll rise with me, we say a small prayer over this body for this meeting, and then I'll ask you to join in the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag. If you'll bow your heads. Dear God, we come to unite tonight as a council and ask for your guidance over this meeting. Help us to make the right decisions for our friends, our relatives, and all the residents of Miami'sburg. Keep them safe through the cold weather, and it's in your name we pray tonight. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Keisha, can we have a roll call, please? Council members Beekler, Colvin, McCabe, Nestor, Nicholas, Stalder, Thacker. Okay. Counsel, can I have a first and a second to please excuse Councilman Vice Mayor Steve Beekler from tonight's meeting?
Shall move.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Okay. Keisha, Vice Mayor is excused for the meeting. As part of your study packets that Keisha sent out to us last week, it had the minutes from the February 4th meeting in it. Are there any alterations, further discussions over the minutes from the February 4th meeting? In hearing none, do I have a first and a second to approve those?
Shall move.
Second. Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Minutes are carried. Lots of faces in the audience tonight. Audience, that brings us to our section called Citizens Forum, and what that means is any audience member can come to the podium. You have five minutes to address Miami'sburg City Council, and will need your name and address when you come to the podium. So who would like to go first tonight? Sure? Come on up. I know a lot of you are here for the Centerport presentation, Centerpoint presentation. When we're done with Citizens Forum, then Centerpoint will do their presentation. But yeah, please. Yep? And...
You have to read it. Hi, my name is Cindy Reikert, and I live at 1925 Lord Fitzwalter Drive, and I'm here regarding the A-97 project. Michael from Centerpoint, on our initial visit, informed us we had to remove all structures from our back door to the fence line. This included an eight-to-ten-foot walkway out our back door. We went to the county to investigate, received our property measurements and easement information. Diagram shows, which I have that, 114.5 feet from front to back with a 41-feet easement in our backyard, and nine feet of the 50 feet is in our neighbor's backyard. If you subtract 41 feet from 114.5 feet, that equals 73.50 feet. To correctly identify where the easement begins, two different surveyors stated measure from the inner sidewalk toward the house, 73.5 feet. That will give you the starting point of the right-of-way to the back of the property line. After this discovery, I contacted Michael to dispute that we do not have to pull up the entire walkway from our back door. He just recently had stakes placed in our yard to indicate starting point of the right-of-way. We took measurements from the front yard to the stake, which equals 72 feet. Then we measured from the stake to the back fence, that equals 41 feet. Total, 113 feet of the 114.5-feet property. What was not taken into consideration was our back fence sets in from the property line, one and a half feet. We did this to accommodate the utility lines. We request a correction of the difference to maintain more of our patio walkway. The current walkway, which I mentioned, was eight-to-10 feet, different parts of it. Proposed with the current stake placement, we can obtain four-and-a-half feet. The correction to include the entire property line, the patio can be six feet. And the rest of the walkway and everything else, we agreed to remove in the yard. So that's part one of three things I'd like to mention.
Okay.
And I have a diagram, and I have the one I drew. So I have that. All right. With being said, Centerpoint will replace yards in a better condition than before. A huge concern for us, as well as other neighbors on this street, is the hillside slope that travels downhill steeply into the homes below. We had a retaining wall and a drainage to prevent water pouring in the area of the back door and making a mess. Well, now that's been removed. Hopefully, with multiple neighbors expressing the same concerns, there'll be some consideration with the construction team about leveling some of these yards or making that slope a little less going toward the home. And that's for two reasons. One, for the water retention and the pooling, and another, most importantly for us, is safety concerns. The biggest obstacle with the current slopement is walking in and out of the yard. We were able, at the time, to have steps and a platform to navigate going up into the yard and down to the yard to your back door. However, without steps, there's a fear of falling, especially with us as we age, and we would like to enjoy outdoors and out back without the fear of breaking a leg or something worse. Lastly, Centerpoint does a good job saying what you can't have, but littles disclosed with what is considered permissible. My understanding, structures that can be easily removed, picnic tables, maybe small pavers, tiles or stones, perhaps a small storage, or a removable deck, maybe on hinges that would, you know, up and lift down, that can be lifted by two people. Understandably, larger, heavier items and structures are not acceptable. But I did find this document online as a guideline with Ken Vivek, have I pronounced his name right? He is Centerpoint's contact, surveyor, right-of-way department. And I'd like to know from this document that I found online, if this is accurate and something we can follow upon completion of our remake of our yard. And then one more question. I just thought of this at the very end. I just need to know, are you removing the backyard fence as well? Reason for us is we have some extra cedar that's placed up along the fence line that we'd like to remove prior to that, to reuse to have more privacy from our neighbor in the backyard.
Okay. So that's it. Thank you, Mrs. Reikert. I feel like those last two questions will probably definitely get answered through their presentation.
Okay.
The one with the measurements, that sounds like it might need to look at the drawing, so.
Yeah, and then, like I said, I mean, when we measured our yard, like, it does measure, because we got the big measuring. It was 100, well, it's, one-and-a-half feet is behind our fence, but that's still our property line. So when you measure and include that one-and-a-half, that does make 114.5 feet. But when they did the stake, you know, well, 41 feet is the backyard easement, so from the front, it should be 73.5, and then the stake should be placed. And they measured it and put the stake at 72, which is that difference from the, I don't know if you call that a setback, not sure the proper line from property line to the fence, maybe that's called a setback. So I just want to try to gain that one-and-a-half back for accurate measurements.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Cindy, do you have copies?
No, but you want me to leave?
Okay. No, only if you wanted to.
Well, I want to leave copies. I just didn't have a copy, because they were up somewhere.
You can email it to me, too, if you want.
Oh, I'll do that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I didn't write mine down, because I was talking. I'm Cindy Benjamin, and I live at 1815 Lord Fitzwalter Drive, and I just want to say that the thing that bothers me a little bit about the Centerpoint is that it's almost like we're being bullied, and it's not very appreciative. I've had my yard dug up before when Vectren was the gas line people, and when they came through, they were very pleasant, telling me what was going to happen and what would be, that everything would be replaced, and they did replace everything. I had a pergola in the backyard, they replaced that and put it back for me at no cost to me. We have an underground spring in our yard, and our yard is a swamp without all the drain, we have drain tiles all along, under subsurface, the back of our yard, down the side to the street. Without that, we live on a swamp, and their pipes are in water, which was one of the big problems. That's why my yard was dug up before. They had to repair the pipes because they were laying in water. So, but I've been told they aren't going to replace anything, except they'll throw straw and grass seed down to put our grass back. And I can live without the pergola and whatever back there, and I don't need to put it back, but those drain tiles, without that, there's water just laying in our yard all the time. We can't mow, it's, you know, two feet high, we can't mow the grass because it's a swamp. And, but they're saying they're not going to replace those, they're only, and when I looked things up online, like Cindy did, it said that, you know, when they dig it up, they are required to, you know, put back subsurface drainage, anything like that, but they're saying no. And I did have to kind of argue with them again about the footage, because they said 55 feet from my backyard was their yard. Well, that's my whole backyard from my back door to my back property line is 55 feet, and that would mean I couldn't have anything in my backyard of any kind of structure, and my back door is five feet off the ground, so I don't know if they want me to jump out on a trampoline or keep a stepladder there, or what they want me to do. But the second time they came back, they said I didn't have to tear up my patio, because I showed them my original paperwork from, I'm the original owner of the home, and I have all my blueprints and everything, and it said I could put anything I wanted 14 feet out from my house, which my patio goes out about 12 feet or so. So then they said, oh, okay, well, you can keep your patio, but the pergola has to go, and, but, like I said, I'm just worried a lot about that subsurface drainage that they say they're not going to replace, and that'll be my expense to put that back in my yard. And it's kind of a, I don't really want to have to do that, but, because we need the drainage.
Thank you. And again, hopefully, we'll get that question answered before you leave about the drainage lines. Hopefully, we'll get that answered.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. Hi. Hi, thank you. My name is Marsha Matson. I live at 1901 Lord Fitzwalter. I'm the original owner. I've been there, we built our house, it's been almost 40 years right now, this year. At the time we bought the property, we signed a, we signed that we would not put anything on the gas pipelines, no bushes, no trees, nothing on top, nothing over it or anything like that, no swimming pools or anything like that. So we made sure that we never had anything there. Years ago, Vectren did come around, and they had people take out bushes and trees and had them move their sheds and everything, anything that was on these pipelines. They never came to us and said, my shed was online or any of my landscaping. They never came and told us that. Now, Centerpoint Energy wants us to clear any obstructions and perceive intrusions. This includes my shed and my landscaping in my backyard that we've never had an issue before. This will be done at my expense, along with the other property owners along the gas pipeline. They all have to pay for everything to be done. Centerpoint Energy also wants to temporarily remove parts of my fence to do the work. I don't know how much they plan on taking down. My fence is only two years old, I just had it put up, it's vinyl. I need my fence for my dogs to keep them in their place. I need to know how long this is going to take. I don't want it to take the whole summer. I have animals. I don't need them to be running free or anything like that. I understand having to replace the pipelines, I do understand that, if they need to be, but for almost 40 years, I've been there for 40 years, we have been compliant, and now Centerpoint Energy wants us to come and destroy our backyards at our expense. And at my expense, I would be removing and maybe replacing my shed, replacing and removing and replacing the landscaping that I've done, and lastly, paying a large water bill after the job is completed to water my backyard to have the grass grow at my expense and our neighbors. So after that being said, our neighbors and I will be left cleaning up the backyards, our backyard, when they are finished, at our own expense. So that's my mainest problem, is expense. We, tough, things are tough. Prices are high, and we have to pay for it, and I just don't think that's correct. I've been here for 40 years. We try to, our whole neighborhood keeps our neighbor, our yards clean and upkeep. We're a great neighborhood, and I just don't feel that our backyards need to be destroyed by these people.
Thank you. Thank you. Please?
I'm John Wusti, here with my wife Nancy, 1201 Kirkley Hall Drive, and we're here with another update on our ongoing saga to save our gazebo and deck, which cost us $65,000 in the last few years. Deck just finished last year, as well as the only tree in our backyard. These things need saving from the wrecking ball, because they encroach slightly on a 50-foot easement established in 1950 and owned by Centerpoint Energy. This easement was unknown to the homeowners and the city. Even the county recorder's office had no knowledge of this easement until we passed along the information we got from Centerpoint, that it was referenced on pages five to seven of a document filed with the county 55 years ago. The update is that right after the last city council meeting, city engineer Bob Stanley said he got a call at 5:00 that night, saying Centerpoint decided to work around our structures, and the legal department was putting something in writing. Two weeks later, today, we heard that we will receive this agreement either tomorrow or Thursday. We also heard that in order to get them to spare our structures, we have to agree in writing to take them down whenever they replace the second pipeline. That could be in 50 years, when we're both dead, and the structures are about at the end of their useful life, or it could be in two years, and we'll be just about as angry and sad as we've been this winter. So it's like a win, but with an asterisk, that at any point, it can change into a loss. So we'll be talking to our lawyer to see if there's any potential for a better outcome. Nonetheless, it is a much better scenario than we were facing three weeks ago, and there are people we want to thank for that. We want to thank Bob, City Manager Keith Johnson, and Mayor Collins for being advocates for us in meetings with Centerpoint, and Sarah Thacker-Clark for making efforts online to organize the people most affected, and any other city employees who've helped. We also want to thank Tom Jones, who we have not got to meet yet, but we know that he's sitting right there, one of Centerpoint's representatives, who has advocated for us within the company, along with Walt Hibner, who is also right there. So thank you. It feels like we've been running our own turkey trot, and for a while, it felt like the turkeys were going to get a crushing victory. So our current situation is a vast improvement, and we thank you. If there end up being other ways that any of you can help, you might get a call from us. To address the bigger picture from a prevention standpoint, I would again ask the city to make sure the easement is known to anyone requesting building permits, to people calling before they dig, and to people buying affected properties. Use of the website and/or the newsletter may be appropriate. Tom, my request to Centerpoint is that your company makes an effort to determine if other easements elsewhere are hiding in the shadows. If they are, please inform the homeowners involved, so that they don't suffer financial, logistical, and emotional trauma due to pure understandable ignorance of the situation. In a win-win outcome, it will also make the companies work easier down the road, and it will avoid hits to your public reputation. As a financial advisor who evaluates whether my clients should buy stock in certain companies, I've always been of the school of thought that responsible companies consider all of their stakeholders. Shareholders, yes, but also customers, employees, the communities they operate in, and the planet we all have to share. We happen to have a home that's about 30 and 40 feet from two pipelines that are 24 and 20 inches in diameter. According to the Pipeline Safety Trust, pipelines that size should be 330 to 400 feet away from any residents, because they say that even people within that far longer distance are likely to die in the event of a pipeline explosion. That clearly wasn't a generally accepted guideline when these homes were built in the 70s and 80s, but should be considered when new homes or pipelines are approved or built in Miami'sburg and elsewhere. Also, two years ago, while eating in our gazebo ironically, we twice in two weeks noticed a gas smell and called Centerpoint about a leak. They fixed the problems, digging up part of our neighbor's yard to do it. Both times, we were not, we were told not to turn on lights or use our garage door opener until the problem was fixed, because even these slight uses of electricity were dangerous with natural gas in the air. So based on those examples, I would say that we have a huge stake in the successful and safe operation of Centerpoint Energy, and we deserve consideration in their decisions. Also, to speak in dollars and cents, which is part of my job, a big part of a company's evaluation is their quarterly earnings per share. Each penny in Centerpoint's quarterly EPS represents just under $6.5 million. In that context, for an event that is rare, like a pipeline being replaced for the first time in 75 years, and unique, and that I hope not all easements are as completely unknown as this one was in size, I think residents should either have their structures worked around, like Centerpoint is kindly doing in our case, or they should be compensated for any reasonable expenses of moving things, unless Centerpoint can take care of moving it themselves. Of course, I wouldn't be surprised if they find some people who blatantly build things right over the pipelines, knowing it violated easements, but just hoping to get lucky that the pipelines would last until after they moved out. Personally, I don't mind if those people pay the consequences of losing their bet. But for the rest of us, who are trying to do the right thing, I'd like to think that the PUCO would allow Centerpoint to include any related costs in their rate calculations and pass them through to their 316,000 Ohio customers, who would probably pay less than a dollar apiece for this rare and unique occurrence. But even if the PUCO disallowed those costs, Centerpoint's extra expenses would be nowhere near the $6.5 million it would take to lower earnings per share by a single penny. And if corporations or people, as the Supreme Court has ruled, then there's no reason we shouldn't expect them to show human kindness and understanding, and maybe even follow the good old golden rule. So again, thanks to everyone who helped us. And Tom, my hope is that you get promoted to positions of higher and higher authority, and in any case, that you make your genuine empathy and reasonableness as contagious as the flu, so that many more people at Centerpoint are infected with it.
Thank you.
And thanks, council members, for your time.
Very well said. Thank you. Please?
Hi there. My name is Josh Harmon. 823 Mary John is our address. I apologize, I was under the impression there wouldn't be an opportunity to speak, so I don't have anything prepared, but I did just want to sort of introduce our particular situation. We're sort of at the end of the line, we're at the bottom of the hill, and relatively new to the area. We moved here, we moved on to Mary John two years ago, just a little over two years ago, relocating to the area to become one of the ministers at Miami'sburg Christian Church. We wanted to be part of the community that we're serving in. So we love our neighborhood, it has been great. This has been the first really hard thing that we've had to go through with this. The communication that we had from Centerpoint involved the retaining wall on our, right off of our back porch. And as in most cases, it sounds like everybody's had a similar experience, it's just a, it's at the edge of the easement, it's got to come down, everything in a 50-foot swath has to be bare earth. We have pictures, which I'd be happy to show, but the retaining wall is just off of our porch and does come to the edge of that easement, and is unfortunately, at the top of that wall is earth. It's over five feet at the highest spot and goes the length of our house. It's stone and concrete, and is holding the hill back from overtaking our, you know, back door of our house. We explained this, Mike Jones from Centerpoint came out, we actually asked him to have it restaked, because the stakes had long since disappeared in the weather, and to take some pictures and just show this to someone who might be able to make a determination if this constituted a permanent structure. We weren't able to, apparently can't verify for sure that that was original, but it matches the stonework on the house, and I can't imagine that the hill would have survived long if there hadn't been a retaining wall there from the time the house was built. So it's a little confusing, you know, how this can, how this could be, you know, encroaching on that easement. That said, all the communication was, that's at your expense, and then you can put it back right after we're done, not knowing when exactly the work's going to happen or how long it's going to take, and could, they weren't able to produce an answer to, if I take this down, and it takes you weeks to get the work done, and the hill washes into my house, is homeowners going to accept that claim? Are you going to do something about that? Or are we just, I mean, my wife and I, Melanie and I have four kids, three of which are still at home. That would be a fairly large expense for our family, that would take everything we had and more. And that was expressed. Mike said, you know, it was probably one of the more extreme cases he'd seen, said he would take the pictures, he did. Two to three weeks later, those same pictures showed up in a certified letter from Centerpoint saying, this is, your wall has to come down, the wall and the landscaping, and here's the pictures we took of it, which were meant to sort of influence to say, this is a permanent structure. So, yeah, we're really hoping that cooler heads prevail, that logic, this isn't something that we put up for vanity, it's not something we put it up at all, and it's also keeping the hill from collapsing into our house. So we'd really like to see some resolution to this, because this is, it's just not even a possibility for us to be able to do. So, yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Harmon.
Hi. My name is Karen Saddle. We live at 1214 Lord Fitzwalter Drive. We're original owners, have been there for 30X years, 1989. Have had several conversations. Tom Jones, are you Tom? You took care of our fence. The surveyors broke our invisible fence kindly, you repaired it, they fixed it, and all was good. Then we hear all about these easements. We have to remove trees. Are they going to grind the stumps? Yes, it was confirmed they're going to grind the stumps. However, our invisible fence? No, we're not doing anything with it. I'm fearful for my dogs. They have an invisible fence, it goes around our entire yard. What do I do with them? They are never tethered. I don't want them running out in the street, getting killed, and Centerpoint says, no, we're not going to do anything. It's all on your expense. My expense is nowhere near what Wusti's is. It's $900. I have What do I do with them? They are never tethered. I don't want them running out in the street getting killed. And CenterPoint says, no, we're not gonna do anything. It's all on your expense. My expense is nowhere near what Wusti's is. It's nine hundred dollars. I have a quote here to present to CenterPoint for the replacement of the fence. But what do I do in the meantime? Half of our wood pile has to be, no structures, but it's the invisible fence and the safety of my animals that he just really said, oh, well, you'll have to put them on a leash. That's not feasible. It really is not for my dogs because they can go out front without their collars and without the fence, uh, in working condition. I would like them to consider replacing it. There's Ohio Utilities. It states that if they destroy anything or disrupt your property, they are required to return it to original or better than it was. And they are not coming through with that for a lot of people. And I'm very disappointed in them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming. Looks like we've switched sides of the room.
Hi, guys.
Hi.
Denny Capps, I'm at twelve-thirteen Kirkley Hall. Um, so I, I guess my biggest complaint and my, my main concerns are, um, just like my other neighbors, I have two dogs. Um, and I have an electric fence up as well. Um, the expectation is for me to move my outbuilding, um, move my fixed fire pit, tear down my pool, and tear down my pool deck. When I bought the property a year and a half ago, um, bought it from my buddy and, and friend Rick Milton as my realtor, he showed me the paperwork for the easement. The easement documented by the county, by the city, was about a foot and a half to two feet, feet outside of my pool area. Went straight through my building, straight through my fire pit, which I was in understanding that if something happened, I would have to move those. The easement that Mr. Jones had showed me when he come out, it was a quarter into, not even a quarter, probably two feet into my pool line. When they came out to stake, it's another six feet beyond that and a foot and a half off of the steps off of my main deck, which goes straight through my pool deck, straight through the middle of my pool. So, when, I feel like I was kind of falsified as when I bought the property because I have a big family. I have five children. And I have a wife that's very ill as well. She just came through a kidney transplant. And, you know, the, the big shazoo at my house is the entertainment in the backyard. And at this point, that is gone. They're telling me that I have to tear down my pool. I've got five young children in the home that no longer have entertainment for the summer because this easement comes up to a foot and a half off of my main deck, which is my entire backyard. So there is no ball. There is no playing in the yards. There is no swing sets. All of that is gone at this point because of this easement. I'm an HVAC guy, so I'm familiar with gas. I'm familiar with plumbing, all of that stuff. We're not even allowed to tap into this line to bring gas into the neighborhood because it's a transmission line. It's a high-velocity or high-pressure line. I personally wouldn't mind tapping into it and put gas to, give my money to them as well for the efficiencies that gas has to offer. But they're telling us that we can't do that either. So there is no benefit for us. We just stand to lose here. And I feel like me personally, and, and, you know, I'm hearing some of the other testimonies, there's a lot that other people are losing as well. But this is my children's entertainment. This is my livelihood for my wife. We had to retire my wife six months ago due to her illness. You know, the, the summer is ruined at this point with having to tear down our pool. And then on top of that, as expensive as things are now, I can't afford to put all this back. I can't afford to put this back because I have to raise five children. Have to put food on the table. I have to go to work every day and make all of this happen. And then for them to tell us that all the financial burden lays on us, I think is garbage personally. I really do. Originally, Mike Jones tried to work with me. I, I was disgruntled at the beginning because I didn't want to have to do anything because this is the entertainment for my backyard. He originally told me that we'll work around the pool. Now they're telling me that the pool eas, or the easement comes halfway through my pool and it has to come down along with the deck. The deck, once it's tore down, it's not gonna go back up. It is an older deck, so once it, once it gets tore down, it's gonna get destroyed. And I'll have to fit the bill to rebuild everything. So I don't think it's fair, not at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Uh, Chris O'Reilly, thirteen-eleven Kirkley Hall, um, right down the road from Denny. Um, same boat, um, as everybody else. I've been given multiple things from multiple people. I'm, I'm still not even sure where the measurements are. Um, they came and staked the yard, but the measurements don't even make sense or match what was told to us by Mike Jones. Um, they came in and all of these things were there before I bought the house in 2016, mind you. Um, shed, I have a massive deck. Um, and trampoline, there's some things that can be moved. I have no problem with moving those, you know, even the, even the shed, if it's just a couple hundred bucks to move, whatever. Um, but my deck to be removed and rebuilt is forty-three thousand dollars. And I was told, not my problem. The way that I was treated, the way my wife was talked to by Mr. Jones, was completely unacceptable where I lost my cool and I probably shouldn't have. I was a little disgruntled. But from the information that I'm getting from him, um, then the guys coming out and measuring, and the measurements don't make sense. And then I talked to somebody else, and I think she's in Indiana, a lady on the phone, about encroachments. Um, she's saying that other things have to be removed. But then I talked to somebody else, and those things don't have to be removed, but these have to be removed, or we might be able to work around this, but we can't work around that. Um, just tons of misinformation. Don't know where I stand. Um, again, what I can't afford and what we, you know, what we can do. If I take that deck down, I mean, just like the other lady, my, my, my back door is five feet near. You know, I have dogs. I have a privacy fence that I built five years ago that cost me nine thousand dollars. You know, it's, these expenses add up, add up, and nobody's willing to help. And it's, you know, again, you know, my, my kids play with Denny's kids, you know, and his kids come to my house, but, you know, taking down a fence, dogs running loose, I mean, it just, it can't happen. And again, there's absolutely no help and complete misinformation. So that's, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. So I'm Matt Janing. I live at twelve-eighteen Lord Fitzwalter Drive. Uh, so my point, uh, to make here is the process of everything. I feel as though that we have been slighted. Uh, showed some pretty pictures of the community up there before this meeting, right? Our entire street is a privilege of this community. We keep it up. Our yards look great. Our neighbors are nice. We talk to one another. We do the right thing. CenterPoint has not. When they started doing their assessments back in June, I talked to the surveyors out there. They said, we have to measure everything. Diameters of every tree, we have to measure into your yard. They said they sent me a note. Didn't receive the note that they would be in my yard. And it was because when I bought the house, my mortgage company put the wrong address, uh, for the mortgage company and their PO box. So random people show up in my yard. Granted, you know, uh, I try to keep a level head, go out, talk to them, ask them what's going on, and they're completely nonchalant. They don't want to have anything to do with me. They say they have the right to be there. Okay, no problem. Just wanna ask you before I let my dog out, uh, he's a puppy. Uh, he'll probably do nothing but lick your face off. But I want to be polite to other people. But yet, no politeness was returned from their part. So then Mike Jones comes and shows up one day, uh, who is from Volkert, or Volkert. I don't know exactly what their company is or what they do. Um, but to say the, 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 I guess, second of what my neighbor just said, um, we were mistreated. Uh, very little information was given out. Uh, I have a tendency to ask a lot of questions from the beginning. Uh, so I probably inundated him a lot with questions. He came out on December thirteenth. Uh, we were out there in the below-zero temp. Uh, and he was willing to talk to me, I thought. Um, offered him coffee, tried to be polite again, uh, and got zero information back. Asked about, what was the extent of the work being done? Are you ripping up just the pipe? Are you taking out the entire easement? Where is the easement at? How many trees are to be taken out of my yard? And he, again, zero. We'll get back to you at some point in time. He took some pictures, sent me a photo in the mail and a certified letter a little while later that said, hey, uh, your garden's gonna be removed and your trees are gonna be removed. Um, oh, sorry, they use the word trim. Uh, but having to get down to brass tacks with him, it wasn't until I pushed the issue a little bit that I found out they would actually be grinding up the trees entirely. Um, then, uh, radio silence, right? Had my questions back. Hey, uh, where is this easement at? Exactly where in my yard? What am I gonna have to rip up? I have multiple trees back there that I'm proud of that I planted. Uh, might call me a tree hugger because of it, right? And, uh, no response. So then he comes out, stakes the yard. Again, zero notice that they were gonna be there that day. I was in the process of putting my dog out when I had a group of five individuals just show up. Again, no respect and no decency. I get it. You have a right to your easement. No problem, right? And I, I see it, right? You wanna make it right and you wanna do the right thing. We don't ask for very much in return. This is our property as well. They have one time a year that they're gonna come in and take out one line. There's two. When are they gonna come a second time? Still no response from Mike Jones. I don't know what you guys did in hiring this guy. He's gotta be better at talking to us. So please take that back. Lastly, I am privileged. I have very little that actually has to be removed from my yard now after finally getting down to brass tacks and then staking it up. And I got no problem doing that at my own expense because, hey, I, I drew up some, some bad luck. No problem. My other neighbors here, they have a lot of money invested into making this community, our community, look good. If they have to rip out all of their property and they don't replace it, there's nothing but barren land that looks nasty after they're done doing the ripping up, what's that gonna do to our property taxes, our property values? What's that gonna do to our community, right? I'm a financial guy as well. And I know we've had some levies, raised some taxes. Looks like we're doing good in the community. The park down there looks great. My kids love it. Can't wait for the other park to get done. Can't wait for the pool to get done. All of this costs money. What happens if our properties look bad, values plummet, and we don't have the cash? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone at all? One more time. Okay. In seeing none, I'm gonna call Citizens Forum closed, which brings us to, uh, the part of our agenda that we call presentation. And I think CenterPoint's here. Just kidding. Mr. Thomas Jones and Mr. Walt Hibner, welcome.
Yes, Mayor. Thank you very much. And council members, thank you very much for your time. And I want to thank you residents that unfortunately aren't necessarily CenterPoint gas customers for all your insight directly to us. And, and we feel, we feel what you're saying. We understand the emotions that go into this. Um, I was involved in residential house building at one point. And I know any decision with a house, an extremely emotional decision for anyone. So we understand that. And we just want to give some clarity, and, and not clarity, but we wanted to, let me back up a little bit. So Bob called us October, November, um, wanted to know what the flags were about. He got calls from citizens. Tom and I went and met with, with Bob and explained to him the project and things like that. We, um, we then met with the mayor and, and Chris Vine and Keith and Bob to give more detail later. Um, it, it's a long process. I, I can tell you that our land services group is there to protect you as residents that live close to that pipeline and the company and everyone involved. Because if you think about that pipeline, again, going back to my home building days, that pipeline was there when that was a cornfield. And, you know, unfortunately, the developers decided to build right up to the easement. And fifty, sixty, seventy years later, we're here talking about it in that way. But we have intentions to, uh, to make this right and do this right. So I have Tom Jones. So I'm, I'm Director of External Affairs for Ohio. So I cover the sixteen counties we serve in Ohio. Dayton, Montgomery County being the largest. Um, Tom's a project engineer that's been doing this for about fifteen years. And he's done many of these projects. Coming out of COVID, we came and replaced a line that went from Centerville to Cedarville. So that was a tough time for everyone because everyone was home. You know, we couldn't communicate well. We worked with the city of Centerville in, in Key Saul. Wayne gave us thumbs up for the work Tom's did there. And we worked with those residents, each resident individually, as we went through and replaced that pipeline. We went through subdivisions very similar to what you have here. You know, they, they weren't quite as tight. They weren't quite as many. But they were just as challenging because every property is different. Um, so he went through Centerville, through Bellbrook, in kind of the hillside in Bellbrook, through closely, closely brand-new homes, very close with some big equipment. Went up through, went through Wilberforce, went through the governor's property, and completed the project to Cedarville. And he's done this many times, and I've seen him work, and he does a great job with it. So he will be there. You will get to know him, and I'm gonna let him speak a lot more than I am. You'll get to know him over the next months. And, and he'll give you a better timeline. But I just want to let you know, we're here. We're gonna do it right. Um, we've done it before many a times. You know, we're kind of dealt the cards and the fact that that pipeline was put in so long ago, and it's time for safety of everyone to get that pipeline pulled up and replaced. So, uh, we just want to thank you again for giving us your comments directly. Uh, we'll address those concerns, some of which Tom will be able to talk about tonight. And, um, we'll be around, so if you have any questions, we'll, and rather individually meet or individually discuss those things this evening here, we'll be glad to stick around after our presentation. And if you want to come out in the hallway and talk to us, that would be great. So with that, I'm gonna let Tom talk and give you the details. The, the purpose is scope of work, scale of work, timeline of work, and what the restoration's gonna look like. So those are the things Tom's gonna cover. So thank you again. I appreciate it. And I'll go shut up.
Thank you all. Hi, Tom.
Hello. So, um, I just wanted to start. So as you can see on our handout there, we're replacing a little over two miles of twenty-inch pipeline, both in West Carrollton and Miami'sburg. Some places it splits the, the county or the, um, the city borders. Um, the pipeline we're replacing was constructed in the late nineteen fifties. Um, timing of our project, we're gonna, we're planning on doing work. And now some of this is weather-dependent, but April through October. And I know that's very broad. And I know property owners want more specifics than that. And I promise we'll give them more than that. Um, and I'll, I'll kind of talk through that and explain our, our normal process. Um, I will be sending out letters to property owners with my contact information and, um, my inspector's contact information. He's been doing this work with me since, I think, two thousand and fourteen. He's very experienced and he's, he, he will be onsite every day. So he will be a direct contact for property owners if they have questions. You're always welcome to call me, email me, whatever. But he will be the guy immediately there, so a great resource.
What's his name? Sorry, what's his name?
Ron Griffith is his name. Um, he will, so our normal process, I'm gonna send out these letters. He's gonna reach out to property owners in person. He'll come and meet you and make sure that you got, got the letters. He'll introduce himself. And then he will start to talk specifically about timeline. Um, because again, it's weather-dependent and we're, you know, we'll, we'll be starting on one end and working till the other end. It's difficult to tell somebody, you know, multiple doors down the day we're gonna be on their property. So he'll be
So he'll be communicating that as we go along. He'll give you a heads up, hey, we're going to be there in a week and, you know, we'll be coming through. And then he'll give you updates as we proceed. Um, and again, he'll be kind of your day to day contact. If you have questions, he's a great resource. He'll be right there. If you, you know, need anything from me again, feel free to reach out to me. Um, one other thing I wanted to walk through is just the construction process. Cause sometimes this is confusing to people. Uh, it would be to me if I hadn't done this before. But, um, so we, the first thing we will do is come through and remove fences. Um, we will install temporary fences as needed. Um, once that's done, then we'll come through and we remove the existing pipeline. Um, and then what happens next, we'll weld up the new pipeline and, and start installing that in sections. Again, because of where we're doing this work. Um, if we were, you know, in, in cornfields, we would dig long thousands of feet of trench and weld up thousands of feet of pipe and then lower that in place. It doesn't work in a neighborhood like this. So it's small sections. We're working through the yards. Um, I think to somebody's point, well, I, I will talk more specifics. I, I've got some solutions for some property owners that have concerns. So we'll, we'll deal with that outside as Walt said. Um, once work is completed, so again, we're working, kind of the way we're working is from roadway to roadway. So, um, we'll be working in those backyards from roadway to roadway. Until that pipeline is completed from roadway to roadway, we won't start a restoration. Because we'll still be, need to access through those, those properties. Um, so I know that, you know, people are going to be anxious for restoration to start as soon as we get through. I would be. Um, but please be patient. We're not ignoring you. If you have questions, again, ask us, but normally it's because they're still working on down the way. Once roadway to roadway is basically done, um, then we'll start restoration. We'll restore yards and fences. Um, the yard restoration is done by a local landscaper. And he's been doing this for, well, ever since I've been here. He's, he's done it for 17 years. Beaver Creek Landscape? Yeah, he, he, I'm sure he did. Yeah. And he does a really good job. Um, inevitably there will be problems. Um, we're not perfect on restoration. So, you know, please communicate with us. You can communicate. Scott will give you a card. Scott Bees with Beaver Creek Landscape. He'll give you a card. Call him, he will come back and fix it. Um, and then no matter what happens, we will be back. We do basically a review of the previous year's projects normally in February. Um, so we come back to look because inevitably we'll get settling. So that ditch line, it, it's complicated, but it, it, it can, no matter what we do, sometimes it, it, it's going to settle. Um, in some places, other places it'll be great. But we'll come back the following year. We'll look for places where it's settled and we'll come back and fix those in that's the spring of the next year.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I don't want to interrupt you too much, but
No, you're good.
What's the scope of the work that they're going to be doing? Beaver Creek Landscape? They're going to replace mulch, bushes, just grass? Are they like, what are they putting back?
normally they're going to put back grass. They're going to put back fences. And we ha, I have had them do, um, mulch and shrubs depending, again, this is, it's going to be specific, but it depends on the shrub.
Okay.
I, I know that sounds strange, but I, I'll just explain since you've asked the question. And this really is goes to the trees. Um, the roots over time can and will, they seek water. The, the pipelines end up basically being a conduit for that water. I think somebody even mentioned that. Um, and so the, the roots will grow around the pipelines and they can damage the pipelines.
Okay.
Um, so if, if we are able to use something that's shallow rooted, um, there are shrubs that, that are, there are certain ones that are not. Then, um, it's normally not a big deal.
Okay. Will they speak to the homeowners about those changes and, and what they're going to put in before they do it?
Yes, absolutely.
So they'll get to say, I don't want that in my yard or whatever?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. We said they're going to remove the fences. Do you mean like how, how do they do that exactly? Cause I think somebody mentioned they had a privacy fence and other person has vinyl.
It, it, it depends. Um, I'll say like, there are sections and I, I don't know specifically. Am I not hitting the microphone? I'm sorry. Um, there are sections where I'll say there's like old chain link fence. We're not going to save that. It's not worth saving. We're going to tear it out and put back new chain link fence. Um, there are sections where the vinyl fence that was mentioned, we have taken that out and that's, I have, um, Beaver Creek Landscape remove the fencing. They, they will be the ones removing the fencing. I have them do the removal because they will save it and store it and then reinstall it.
Okay.
Um, that generally works for the vinyl fence. We have done it with wood fence. Um, we, we don't save the posts normally because they are basically impossible to save. So we, we install new posts. Um, we have saved fence panels. Sometimes it isn't worth it, um, to save them, but that is possibility too. We can save fence panels.
And I assume they're going to, they're going to match. Like I think one gentleman said he just put a, a privacy fence and they'll match if they have to replace it.
Yeah, they'll, they'll match. And a, again, I, I'll kind of leave it up to, um, Beaver Creek. But, you know, if, if, if he can't easily match it, he's going to save those panels and reinstall them. So that they have what they had. Um, I, I think most of the time there's, the fences are, he can match them.
Okay. I know you said you were going to be working street to street or roadway to roadway.
Yes.
And, and you're going to go in sections kind of to go through, remove the fence line and then go back through and trench the ground out.
Yes.
What's the timeframe for that? Between removing the fence and doing the trench?
I'm going to, it, it's going to be very rough and very broad, but I'm going to tell you four to six weeks.
Okay.
And, and that's just very rough. Um, one thing, I'm going to back up a little bit because you made me think about it. But as far as starting construction goes, one thing that, um, I've looked at and I, um, I, I, I've been thinking about, and we, we thought about this as we were going. But I, I know April timeframe for start, I mean, that's our, I'll say our ideal starting timeframe. But it just depends on the weather. You know, I don't want to get into your backyards and we have weeks of rain and tear them up anymore than what we have to. So, um, that's, that's kind of why it, I'll say this is a little loose because I don't, you know, it's going to depend on the weather. I don't want to go in and, and tear up people's yards unnecessarily when we can wait till May, when it starts to dry out and the rain isn't as frequent. And we won't do as much damage.
Okay.
Um, a couple of things, I'm, I, like Walt said, I'm not going to address every specific thing here, but, um, I heard multiple people talk about underground fences. I'll just say that we've done, we do underground fences all the time. I've taken them out and we will, normally what we do is we temporary those across people's yard. So it, it won't be perfect because it'll be laying, you know, across the ground. Sometimes they will trench that in, but normally I think they just leave it laying across the ground. And they will temporary that across so that the temporary fence will work.
Okay.
Um, and then when we're done, they'll put it back where it was. Um,
That's not what Mike Jones said at all.
I understand.
I, I don't trust a, a word that man says anymore.
I'm just, I'm just telling you what, what, what I do and what we've, what we've done. I, I can't speak for him, so I won't, I won't even try. I'm just telling you what, what we do, that's what we do.
Well, he doesn't know that and he's very moved about his presentation.
I'm sorry to hear that.
I'm not impressed with Austin.
I'm, I'm very sorry to hear that. Um, I think I heard somebody talk about, uh, temporary fence. So we do put up temporary fences for dogs. Um, I think, I think somebody mentioned this, uh, I can't remember. They're all, all blend together, so I apologize. But, but even if, um, I was, I was thinking about this as we're sitting there. Even if we have to put up temporary fence and there may be like a day or two where, um, you don't have access to the backyard because they're working right in your backyard. We can put the temporary fence right back up and you're good to go with the dog out there as soon as we're out of the way. So I, I think we can work around some of those things. Um, drainage was another issue and I know it is on Lord Fitzwalter and kind of on down the hill. Um, we do replace drainage tile. That's a, a given. We do that all the time. So that's not an issue. We'll, we'll, we'll maintain, we'll replace, um, whatever drainage tile we have in there. So that, yeah, because there's nowhere for the water to go in those backyards. Um, I know there was a suggestion to regrade some of those yards. We, we actually looked at that to some extent. The issue, and I, I know you're not, not going to love the answer here, but it's, it's difficult because there is another pipeline in there. So we're limited on how much cover, you know, the, the depth of that. So I'm limited on how much dirt I can take off the, the pipeline that's going to remain in place.
Yeah.
So can't modify the grade significantly. Can we tweak it a little bit? For sure. And, um, you know, if, if, if you have specific things that you want grade wise, um, there, it shouldn't be a big deal to do. And again, we'll, our landscaper will be in there. He's going to be doing the, the fine tuning and the fine touches. He can do that sort of thing for, for people as he gets through those yards.
I know. I've had this done before. Beaver Creek Landscape being, is very big, I think Scott and David, right?
Yes.
They're very nice gentlemen and they're very, it's a, they did a really good job of putting everything back for me.
And they've done lots of these for me, so. No, it's our expense. Yeah, we are, we, we will do that. Sorry, did you have another question?
I don't remember.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
Yeah, so a, a question about open trenches. Um, I kind of mentioned this, but I don't know that I was real clear. Well, I did mention it because I was talking about, you know, we'll go thousands of feet where we do open trench. We're, we're going to, that's going to be limited. Um, we're basically going to only open trench what we can get pipe installed and backfilled in a day. We're not going to leave big sections of open trench.
Deep holes in people's backyards?
Um, I, I would say the only places where we will leave open trench, because I need to clarify, is at road crossings. Um, because there's more work there than what we can do in one day. But those will get fenced off every night. We won't put, you won't see pieces of plywood. Um, that drives me crazy when I see that. Um, the fiber optic companies are notorious for putting pieces of plywood. These will get fenced off every day.
You mentioned a second pipeline and somebody else had mentioned that as well. Is there any plan in the future or timeline for that at all?
No plan.
Okay.
None at all. Um, so there's, in some people's yards, there's three pipelines and others there's two. Those pipelines get assessed every seven years, um, with, via inline inspection. So they run a, a tool through the inside of those pipe and they inspect them every seven years. Um, when we started this project, I specifically asked, is there any plans to replace any of the other pipelines? And the answer was no. Because what my point was, if we got to replace any of those other pipelines, we need to do it all at the same time. So we don't disturb the property owners anymore than we have to. So there's no plans to replace any of those other pipelines at this point.
Okay.
Yeah, I, do you have, you have an onsite project manager?
Uh, yeah, Inspector Ron Griffith.
Is that Ron Griffith?
Yes.
So will the citizens have his number?
Yes, the letter that is going to go out will have his letter. And then like I said, he will introduce himself personally. He'll come to your door and knock on your door. He'll have a copy of the letter, again, with his phone number. And he'll, he'll give that to you and yes. And they're encouraged to call, call him if they have any problems or questions.
I have a couple, you know, when Mike Jones has come around, he keeps, he's like so very specific about April 1st. Everything has to be out by April 1st. And I, and we're talking, you're, you just said April through October. So, you know, some of these people that are having to take down part of their home and take down whatever else, that they could have been joined from April to October before someone does it. And so, you know, and he's been very admirable. In fact, some, he came around not too long ago and kind of was like, you haven't started taking this down. And it's like, well, it's not April 1st yet and I, do I have, you know? So is that really going to be, because he said if we didn't have stuff down by April 1st, Center Point would come remove it and fill us. So I, I'm just curious, is that really the case? Do these people have to have their swimming pools and their decks and their walls and everything out by April 1st? So that they can have nothing but a mess until August when somebody gets around to doing it, you know? So what is that April 1st deadline? I mean, is that really the case?
I would say that let's, I, I would prefer to address those situation by situation. You know, I think it depends on what it is. Um, if it's, you know, easily movable, you know, I'll, like I'll, I'll use a swing set for example. Cause I had a gentleman, I think he's actually in West Carrollton, but called me specifically about a swing set. I, I don't, you know, I get it. You know, if we're not, if I'm not there doing work and he's got kids, they're going to want swinging the swing set. So let him swing on the swing set. I don't care. As long as he understands that when we get there, you know, they're going to have to get it out of the way quickly and then we'll come through. So I'm somewhat flexible when it comes to that. I mean, I think the, the other stuff, and I'll let them address that more than I'm going to address that. But some of the other things are, are, are maybe a little different, but.
Yeah, there's going to be specific issues from homeowner to
Absolutely.
To property. So, and, and Walt and Mr. Jones are ret, are willing to stay around and answer those individual questions that you all may still have, right?
Yes, ma'am.
But I know you still have things you want to present, right?
I think I'm, for the most part, I'm done unless there's more questions. Yes?
I just had one other question and obviously it's not really connected to the physical situations that these people have. But I was just curious because it does go along with the impact on the yard. Do you refill with the existing soil or use pea gravel or fresh soil? Or how, what, what impact is that going to, how's that going to carry out?
So I'm glad you brought that up. So there is a, a process that we go through. Um, we will separate the top soil gets separated from the, I'll, I'll call the trenching soil. So there'll, there'll be two stacks of dirt when they do their trenching. One for the top soil, one for the subsoil. And then they'll backfill with the subsoil first. Topsoil go on top. And then we'll inevitably, we always do, we haul in topsoil. So no matter what, I, I, I don't know that we've done a project where we haven't had to haul in topsoil. So they'll generally haul in topsoil and then use that for fine grading. But all, all the dirt will be kept onsite. Um, the only situation where we won't do that and we'll just see, if, I, this may actually impact some folks more in West Carrollton than it will in Miami'sburg. I don't know, we'll see. But it's, it's rock. Um, the, the, if there's a rock, then we'll, we'll take out some, yeah, so we'll, we'll, we'll take, we'll take out, we'll take out some of the rock. Um, and then normally if it's rocky soil, we'll, we'll pad the pipe with sand first. But generally, we still are able to use all the dirt. If, yeah, we're able to use all the dirt and topsoil, and then still likely we'll be hauling in topsoil.
I just have one more question, too, about timeline. This map, is this April to October?
Yes.
So the stuff that's happening in Miami'sburg should be completed, the first part of that, right?
It will depend, it'll depend which way we start. I want
And you don't know that yet?
Not 100%. Well, and let me explain. Because the, some of the thought, and I'm going to talk to my contractor, but some of the thought was that, again, I don't want to tear up people's yards in April if it's soggy wet
Sure.
weather. But there are other places that we could start work in April if it was wet.
Okay.
So that would be the only situation I could think of, and that may delay us a little bit from starting in. But my, what I want to do is start up at Kirkley Hall and work our way south and basically get out of the residential area, I'll say, so we can get those yards restored, get them headed back to some sense of normal sooner rather than later.
Before the summer? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And somebody will, I guess, going back a few months, I've been talking to a lot of the people who live in this area that have, some of the ones that have gotten up and spoken today. I think that there just has really been a lot of miscommunication from your representative, the other Mr. Jones. I spoke to him myself, and he wasn't very pleasant, hung up on me. I mean, he just didn't say very many nice things and then said that it was the homeowner's responsibility, and he couldn't give me any more information. He told me that if, because I asked him, what if this gas pipeline was going through someone's driveway? Is that the homeowner's responsibility to remove a driveway? And he said, yes, that would be their responsibility. I said, how would they do that? He said, I'm not a contractor. I have no idea, but it's their responsibility. And he told me that I should talk to Maggie, but then he refused to give me her phone number, and then he hung up on me. So I'm not, you know, to hear the testimony from the citizens that have not had very good experiences with him, I can vouch that I also did not have a very good experience with him. But I think that good communication from the beginning of this project probably would have gone a long way. And I don't want to see people have to, and I know some people here, Cindy's one of them, has already done a lot to remove the things in her backyard. Just, I think, out of fear of not knowing what's going to happen and not wanting somebody to bulldoze through her backyard, you know? And I think that hearing from, and I know you and Walt both are handling this a different way, which I think everybody appreciates. But I think I just want to make sure from my standpoint as a city councilperson that everyone is being communicated with very clearly moving forward to know, we're coming to your house on April 15th or whatever, or we're coming to your house not until August, and that they would know that ahead of time so that they're not, like you said, removing things unnecessarily or making huge adjustments that maybe don't need to be made. Or there's things that they can work around and you guys are willing to work around for them, like a swimming pool or something that they would like to enjoy all summer before they have to remove it, or maybe they don't have to remove it at all. And I think that those conversations happening sooner rather than later probably are a good idea.
Understood.
Yeah. Thank you. I really appreciate you coming out tonight.
No problem.
Your time, yeah.
You have a question regarding to the second pipeline?
Yes.
You said it's assessed every seven years.
Yes.
So when you assess the A97, was the second one also assessed at the same time? So our clock is set, we're starting the clock seven years right now, or is it?
I apologize. I don't know. I don't do the assessments, so I don't know the assessment schedule. So I cannot tell you specifically when it was assessed, but
Is that information that you can find out?
Absolutely.
Did you find that out?
Yeah.
And let us know?
I can't.
Assess it. And then secondarily to that, could you give us your professional opinion on how much worse or how much better is the second pipeline than the one you're replacing? In terms of, my best guess is it will last X number of years. You know, the A97 was put in in 1950, and then the other one was put in in 19
In the 70s.
70s, so it's different, you can, you know, different
Yeah, well, so I'll tell you this. This maybe will help you. A77 is the one that does not go through your yard. It's the third line. It was installed in, I think, 1951. So it's actually older than A97. But it's the way, the method that the pipe was manufactured was totally different, a totally different method than what was used for the 20-inch pipe. And unfortunately, it was, it was a common method at the time for manufacturing particularly 20-inch pipe. That's how they did it. It's called a low-frequency well. It's just not the same quality as what the modern pipelines are used to make. The good news is, the 1974 pipe is more modern and was made with the better method, I'll say.
And that's the second one?
That's the second one that goes through your yard. Yeah.
161?
A161, yes. Yes.
And in your opinion, 1974 A161 has shelf life of, like, a little less? Is that possible?
It, well, there
A range?
The, in the industry, in theory, say they'll last forever. And I know that sounds crazy because nothing lasts forever. But they are cathodically protected. So the pipelines have a current that runs through them to protect them from corrosion. So they don't corrode at any kind of rate that you would normally see if you took a piece of bare steel and buried it in the ground. They don't corrode at that rate at all. In fact, it's very little if at all. So in theory, they'll last a really, really long time.
Like you say, never say never, but also more or less information that's communicated by Mike Jones is that we're going to do it next year.
Yeah.
So that's
That's totally incorrect, yeah. There are no plans to replace the other pipeline at all.
Thank you for starting.
No problem.
Two more little technical things.
Mm-hmm.
Get through the pipe. What is the amount?
It will be four, it'll be four feet deep in the yards and five feet deep at road crossings.
And you agree to the
Yeah, to the top of the pipe, yes.
The city's probably wondering how we're going to cross the road.
Yeah, and I forgot to mention that. So thank you. So built well, and I kind of said something there that may not be exactly correct. The road crossings, the way we do these road crossings, we will, we're not going to open cut the roads. Or we're going to actually use the existing pipe and we will break it loose. I know that seems like such a strange term, but after 75 years, it's in there pretty tight. We'll break it loose, we'll weld the new pipe to the old pipe, and then we'll just pull it straight through. So the roads should not have any, should not be damaged by our construction. And it also helps with utilities, existing utilities, you know, we don't have to worry about all those utility crossings.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
Sorry. Um, this is maybe a stupid question. But how does this affect the delivery of natural gas to all those houses?
How does it affect the delivery of natural gas to?
Look, wherever that gas is going, what happens to that gas?
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, so some of it will be flowed through our 16-inch pipeline, the one that only goes the third line, I'll call it. The 24-inch line will be shut down for a short period of time, but then it will, the intent is to make it, to bring it back operational as well during construction of the 20-inch line. But the, this is the reason we're kind of restricted in the summer construction windows, and we don't do this work in the winter, is because the gas load decreases. So we're able to get that gas from other sources.
Okay.
In the winter, you know, those pipelines are critical for, like, days like today.
Yeah.
For, you know, keeping houses heated and hot water.
So do you anticipate anyone losing gas service during this process?
No, there is one house on Sir Locks Street. I believe it does have a meter. And I will, we will maintain gas through that house.
But not to anyone else in the city?
No.
That would be supplied by that pipeline?
Sorry, I didn't understand. No. One other comment, because I now I've heard this twice, there isn't gas. There actually is gas on Lord Fitzwalter North Asherwood Forest. There's a small I understand
There's one house on Lord Fitzwalter on the South Asherwood Forest. I mean, they tapped into the gas line from the balloon there.
Yeah, that, yep. So, but that
Our end of Lord Fitzwalter, he tapped into the line that's in his backyard. No, not, no, up the street from us, the second house up tapped in.
This is not my, this is not my realm, but I'll put it out there, that the distribution pipe can be extended. You know, so if there are property owners that want access to natural gas, there is a way, and I'll leave that more, that's more in Walt's wheelhouse than it is in mine. But they can, you know, extend that gas service.
We were told it would cost us $20,000 to hook in, to run the pipe all the way down.
I don't know how it is currently. I know that historically, the way it was, and this will sound strange, my dad actually did this when I was a little kid. Because I, my house was built just a little bit before, but it didn't have natural gas when it was originally constructed. But he got the neighbors together, and if you get enough people, it goes, that dollar, the dollar amount for that goes away completely. So anyway, I'll leave that more towards Walt if you guys have questions.
And those are individual questions that can be asked while we move on to the rest of our agenda. You both have been very kind with your time tonight and generous. And everybody here has been very patient. So thank you. I know I put your cell phone number on my phone. If anyone needs their number, you can get it from any elected official. You can call, Keisha will have it. We will get you in touch with them if you can't. But they are willing to stay around and answer some more questions. We just need to move on through the agenda, but have a great night.
Thank you.
And thank you both again so much. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to kind of let everyone mingle in a little bit. Council on the staff that remains, we are going to move on through old business. We have two items of old business. They are both second readings. The first one is going to be brought to us by our city planner. I've got to find him, though. There he is. Our city planner, Andrew Rodney, is going to go over ordinance number 7127. And again, council, this is its second and final reading.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of council. This is the second reading of ordinance 7127 in ordinance to rezone property at 33 to 37 Lawrence Avenue from R01 Research Office to OS1 Office Service. Just to give you a little indication and a map showing the current zoning there on the left, which is R01, the proposed zoning on the right, which is OS1. And then the two images of the buildings located at 33 and 37 Lawrence Avenue, they are a couple of small office buildings built quite some time ago that are now under the ownership of Miami'sburg Christian Church, who wishes to expand their ministry services into these buildings. So again, the purpose is to modify the zoning map to allow office service zoning at these addresses. Again, Miami'sburg Christian Church wishes to move some of their ministry services. Threads already operates at 33 Lawrence Avenue, so that will essentially legalize that particular use. And then at 37, they intend to move some of their youth ministries, some of their, some of their other activities that they do into that specific building and use it as overflow parking whenever they have large events at the church as well. The R01 zoning currently does not allow that type of use, but OS1 does. If you look at OS1, it is also another one of these transitional zones that we have that kind of separate heavy commercial, like what you see at the shopping center, from more residential areas, which you see south on Lawrence Avenue. So it still acts as a kind of a buffer zone similarly to the R01. Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on January the 27th. They unanimously recommended approval of the ordinance, and we received no objections either in writing or in, as part of the public hearing as well. So with that, I have nothing further. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Council, do we have questions on this? I know we discussed it, but any more concerns? All right. In hearing then, council, do I have a first and a second to read this ordinance by, for the second time by Title Only tonight?
So move second.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Tom. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Keisha, could you read it, please?
Ordinance number 7127, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map to rezone the properties at 33 through 37 Lawrence Avenue, city lots number 4496 and 4497, from R01 Research Office to OS1 Office Service.
Thank you, council. Do I have a first and a second to pass ordinance number 7127?
So move second.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Brian. Keisha, we're on call.
Council members Colvin?
Yay.
McCabe?
Yay.
Nester?
Yes.
Nicholas?
Yay.
Stalder?
Yay.
Thacker?
Yes, great. Thank you. Ordinance number 7127 has been adopted. I think we'll see you in a minute, right?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay. The next one under old business is item number two. It's a resolution. And the resolution is being brought to us tonight by Bob Stanley. And again, council, this is the second reading.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Yeah, the next item is the second reading. It's Resolution 3028. It's a resolution to declare the necessity that certain sidewalks, curbs, gutters, driveway aprons, trees, stumps, and the miscellaneous items within the public right-of-way shall be constructed, repaired, or removed in connection with our 2025 sidewalk curb and gutter program. As council knows, this is an annual item. It gives us the authority to do the program. And we're excited to get it out for bid and get the results. Interpact was a resolution of necessity. It declares the necessity for doing the repairs. This year's program includes the 13 streets that I talked about last time, nearly 140 property owners. And there you can see the streets. I'm not going to go over all of them. They are grouped by area. Probably most significant, we're going to be up near 741 and 725 in the Prestige Plaza Fiesta Lane area. We'll be over near Bonnie Brook and those four subdivision streets so that we can get that paved. And then we're going to start into the Marsha Warwick Plaid area. And that's going to be probably a two- or three-year program, but we've got those streets, at least part of those streets program. Letters went out to most of the property owners, the group in the Bonnie Brook area. We are going to go ahead and notify them just out of courtesy. We'll be out there once the weather breaks and actually do the marking. They will get a letter of the quantities, and as always, they'll have a choice or they can go in the city program. And probably most importantly, once all that work's done and we get through the program next, the year after, they'll get their street paved and it'll all be brand new. This is the second reading. We recommend approval, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Council, further questions about? In hearing then, do we have a first and a second to have resolution number 3028 be read for the second time by Title Only?
So move second.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Ryan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, Keisha?
Resolution number 3028, a resolution to declare the necessity that certain sidewalks, curbs, and gutters, driveway aprons, trees, and stumps, and miscellaneous items within the public right-of-way shall be constructed, repaired, or removed in connection with the 2025 sidewalk curb and gutter program.
Thank you, Keisha. Council, do I have a first and a second to approve resolution number 3028?
So move.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, John, thank you, Ryan. Keisha, roll call?
Councilmembers McCabe.
Yay.
Nestor.
Yay.
Nicholas.
Yay.
Stalder.
Yay.
Thacker.
Yes.
Colvin.
Yay.
Great. Thank you, thank you, Bob. Ordinance number 3028 has been, I'm sorry, resolution number 3028 has been approved. That brings us to new business, counsel, item number one under new business is ordinance number 7133. And there is again our city planner, Andrew Rodney.
Uh, good evening once again. Yes, uh, this is a new item, uh, item of new business, ordinance 7133. Uh, it's an ordinance to approve a contract with the Greater Dayton RTA to accept, uh, grant funds to construct a project here in town that, uh, I will, uh, now, uh, kind of go over in a little bit more detail. So the purpose is to install what are known as bus stop landing pads at approximately 35 fixed route stops that we have here in the city of Miami'sburg. Uh, the project will also include the purchase of up to six, uh, what are known as big belly trash cans, and those will be placed at, uh, select stops within the city boundaries, and I'll talk about that here in a moment. So the cost is approximately $90,000, that's what we've estimated at this point in time. Uh, this grant is an 80/20 reimbursable grant, so G D R T A will provide $72,000, uh, the city will match that with $18,000. Uh, the purpose of the landing pads is, uh, essentially to provide all weather access to our fixed route system. What it will do is install a small concrete area between the existing sidewalk and the curb, which will allow a bus to lower their handicap accessibility ramp, and to allow folks who specifically need, uh, mobility devices to get on and off the fixed route system, for them to access that system, uh, throughout the entire calendar year. Uh, this particular project, it fulfills the objectives of our Miami'sburg transportation plan that you folks adopted late last year, uh, as well as our responsibilities under the Americans with Disabilities Act to make, make our right of way as handicap accessible as we can. Uh, the most important notes that I wanted to, uh, mention tonight is that this is being done at no cost to the adjacent property owner. Long-term maintenance will be at no cost to the adjacent property owner, same as things like streetlights, street signs, that kind of thing. Uh, those, uh, whenever replacement needs to happen with these pads, that will happen at the city's or municipal expense, that will not be included as part of the assessment that we do for curb and sidewalk. So this is an image of the, uh, locations in town where these pads will be installed primarily along East Central Avenue, North Heine, or North Heinecke Road, King Richard Parkway, Byers Road, and State Route 741, Springboro Pike. So those are the primary locations, uh, where we're currently lacking access to the fixed route system, uh, at these particular locations. Uh, this is a, an example, uh, Mr. Colvin may recognize this particular example, uh, of, uh, a particular location where one of these pads will be installed, so the before, uh, will be, is on your left, uh, the after will be on your right. Again, you'll see that it's just a simple pad of concrete about, on average, about eight by five, uh, to again, allow that ramp to come down, uh, on a concrete surface to allow somebody who is using a mobility device to go from the sidewalk onto the pad, uh, onto the ramp, and onto the bus. Uh, a little bit more about the, the big belly trash cans, so these have been deployed in a number of different municipalities here in the Dayton area. Uh, Centerville probably being the one that's incorporated, incorporated them the most, uh, over the years, Kettering has a few as well. Uh, these particular trash cans have a much higher volume, uh, capacity to accept trash. Uh, the units that we're receiving are also solar powered, self-compacting, so as that trash accumulates within the, within the bin itself, it will sense when it's full, and it will self-compact that trash down. Uh, it can fit about five times as much garbage as a normally sized trash bin. Uh, in addition, there are some other features, it's obviously a completely enclosed case, so as trash is deposited, it's not like spilling out into the, you know, coming out over the top, or animals aren't getting into the bin and destroying it as well. Uh, there's also, uh, software that's gonna be included with our purchase that will provide, uh, like fault indicators, if there's something blocking the bin, or if there's some issue with the bin, we'll get notified automatically. When the bin is full, we'll get notified automatically. So what this does is it reduces the amount of time our public works folks have to do driving around to these trash cans and checking them on a, sometimes, uh, I think it's a twice a weekly basis, if I remember correctly, that some of these are checked. Uh, this will significantly reduce that type of activity to where they may only have to go out really whenever it's indicated that the, the bin needs to be emptied. Uh, one other thing we're gonna install, uh, as part of these bins is a, a little, uh, kind of like cigarette depositor. So as folks, if they're smoking at a bus stop and they wanna dispose of their cigarette, instead of doing it on the ground or throwing it in the trash can where it could set something on fire, there's gonna be a little receptacle right on the front where they can just pop it right in there, and it'll be emptied separately. A lot of cool features with these, uh, particular units. Uh, so these is kind of the, the, uh, the, uh, the, all the, the flavors of trash cans that Big Belly sells. Uh, we're, uh, getting the Smart Max unit, which is the one all the way to the right. Uh, the reason we chose that unit is because obviously it's got the most feature-rich of all the units that they have available, and given the fact that we're getting an 80/20 split, the incremental difference between the cheapest and the most expensive bin is like maybe a couple hundred dollars to, uh, for us. So we feel it's better to get as more capability than less, uh, so that is why we chose to move forward with the, uh, the Smart Max unit, uh, in this particular instance. So it is, uh, Wi-Fi enabled, so we'll connect to the cell phone network, so we can monitor it 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It has an LED indicator, uh, light on the front, so that little red, green light will let you know when it's good, when it's almost full, and when it is full, and then it comes with that software package as well. Uh, and then this is a, a current installation, this is actually right around the corner from where I live, uh, this is on 48 in Centerville, which shows kind of the whole package of what a project like this would look like. So in this instance, you have the landing pad that has been installed, and you have the big belly trash can that sits there as well. Uh, one thing I do wanna point out as part of this project, we will not be installing any benches or any shelters as part of this project. Uh, those are, are just items that, you know, aren't included in our project and will not be installed as part of this project. It's just the pads and, and the trash cans at this point in time. Uh, so with that, I have nothing further, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about the project. Uh, it, it is, um, included as part of the, as an addendum onto our curb gutter and sidewalk program. Uh, so that's where the, uh, the, the kind of contracting part of it is gonna come into play. And then we hope to have these installed and ready to go, uh, by the end of summer, uh, or into the fall. And, uh, one other thing I do wanna point out is we have, I've already crafted a letter that will go out to all the adjacent property owners. Uh, so once, assuming you folks approve the ordinance this evening, I will send out that letter, they will be notified that this project is gonna be happening within, uh, adjacent to their property, and they'll have my contact information if they have any questions, uh, about what's gonna be done. But all the work should occur within the right of way, there should not be any activity on private property.
Counsel, question? I think it's wonderful. Andrew, I remember when we talked about this in study session, didn't you just kind of dig this out? I mean, like you came up with, like you knew that there were money, money was out there?
Yeah, uh, I've, actually I did a project very similar to this in the city of Dayton when I worked there, and this is probably 2010 now, it was 15 years ago now. It's kind of unbelievable, even think about that, but, um, yeah, we did a project in the city of Dayton, I think we had something like 75 different locations where we did this type of project. Actually, used to have a really good photo of somebody struggling to get from the sidewalk into a bus, I just happened to be there at that time, and I can't find that photo. It truly irritates me, because it, it was a perfect indication of, you know, what this is attempting to solve, and that bus driver had to get out of the bus and try to push this person through the mud to get them onto the ramp so they can get onto the bus. And it's, it's something as simple as a little piece of concrete was the difference between somebody having independence and somebody being dependent on somebody else to take them where they need to go. So it, it's, it's a tiny investment that I think can make some real impact in people's lives.
Thank you, thank you for bringing that to us.
Sure.
Counsel, with no other que, questions, the chair entertains a motion to dispense with the requirement that ordinance number 7133 be read on two separate days, authorize its adoption tonight on this first reading, and have it read by title only.
So move.
Second.
Thank you, Tom, thank you, John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, Keisha?
Ordinance number 7133, an ordinance to enter into a contract with the Greater Dayton Regional Transit Authority for community grant funds to install bus stop landing pads and big belly trash cans at transit stops in the city of Miami'sburg, to authorize the city manager to execute all contracts and agreements related thereto, and declare an emergency.
Thank you, Keisha. Counsel, do I have a first and a second to pass ordinance number 7133?
So move.
Second.
Thank you both, Tom and Mike, Keisha, roll call?
Councilmembers Nestor.
Yay.
Nicholas.
Yay.
Stalder.
Yay.
Thacker.
Yes.
Colvin.
Yay.
McCabe.
Yay.
Great. Ordinance number 7133 has been adopted, thanks again.
Thank you very much.
All right, we've got Ryan gave us up for the last two ordinances, the first one is item number two on your agenda, ordinance number 7134.
Hello, mayor, good evening, council. Uh, ordinance 7134 is an ordinance to authorize the city manager to enter into a professional service agreement with Levin Porter Architects for the development of construction documents for the Pipestone Golf Course Clubhouse Improvement Project, and declaring an emergency. So as we've, um, discussed in study session, so the, the scope of work that we're looking at for the Pipestone Clubhouse Improvement Project is actually something that's been in the works for a long, long, long time. Um, I think that, uh, the course opened in 1992, and then that patio area existed, and since that patio area has existed, there's been discussions about how could we enclose that, how could we make that more of a three-season use space? And so that's what this project is primarily aimed at doing. So it's going from that structure to this structure as kind of the vision. So we've done the concept planning with Levin Porter, so we'd like to continue with the, uh, development of construction documents with Levin Porter. Um, the scope of work includes, um, enclosing the patio entrance on the left side of this graphic, expanding the kitchen area to allow for kind of, uh, more capacity and service. There's clubhouse renovations on the inside, kind of combining the pro shop and kitchen and dining area into one space that can be multi-use. And as you'll see in the graphic here, uh, kind of an updated entrance, entryway, uh, to the structure. Uh, so this is the concept rendering of the enclosed patio area, so you kind of see the idea of a three-season, um, room with kind of garage doors that kind of come up and down, and it's connected at the same elevation as the clubhouse as well. This is the concept of the renovated clubhouse where the pro shop, you can see in the front left there, is kind of connected and served, and connected to the kitchen and bar area there, and then plenty of room for people to sit and enjoy themselves in the space. This is the graphic of kind of the scope of work, uh, the red lines indicate the existing clubhouse and patio areas and the new spaces that are going to be created, um, with the project. And finally, some ideas of, in terms of kind of capacity, about 150 capacity in the exterior space, that three-season room, um, 70 or so in, in the interior space, um, there's a kitchen expansion there, and then there's additional rooms. Go back here one quick second. Um, so the idea is that this space can be multi-use, so you can have a, an event happen in, in the three-season room while this normal play is happening through the clubhouse, or since they're on the same elevation, we can open up the doors that connect the two, and you can, uh, serve around 225 people or so at any given venue, or any given event. Um, so the, uh, the design cost for this is around $175,000. Uh, we put it not to exceed cost of $200,000 because we wanted to include a topographic survey of the property, as well as doing some, um, cost design, uh, cost estimation and design work around expanding the parking lot, if we need to consider that as part of this expansion project as well. So that's where we get the $200,000 design costs. Um, this is part of the 2025 capital improvement plan, we expect the design process to take about in six to eight months. Uh, and, and as we've discussed, so Pipestone Golf Course exists in the enterprise fund, which means the revenues generated at the course are the funding source for projects such as this and capital investment into the course. And all that means is the actual construction timeline and final costs and all of that are really dependent on course performance, uh, course projections, uh, taking into account when construction season for, for a project like this may be, what type of phasing may need to happen. So, um, our intent is to get this project kind of going after we make these documents, of course, but it may be delayed depending on, uh, construction seasons and things like that, so. Um, that's kind of the quick overview of that ordinance, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Good stuff.
I think it's much, I think it's much needed, it's time to, to improve the clubhouse.
I noticed there's restrooms in that.
Yep, yeah, there's two additional restrooms in that three-season room.
Clubhouse match, of course, looks great shape all the time, it'd be nice.
Okay, hearing, no more questions or comments, the chair entertains a motion to dispense with the requirement that ordinance number 7134 be read on two separate di, days, authorize its adoption on this first reading, and have it read by title only tonight.
So move second.
Thank you, Tom, thank you, Tom, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, Keisha?
Ordinance number 7134, an ordinance to authorize the city manager to enter into a professional services agreement with Levin Porter Architects for the development of construction documents for the Pipestone Golf Course Clubhouse Improvement Project, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Keisha. Counsel, do I have a first and a second to pass ordinance number 7134?
So move.
Second.
Thank you, Tom, thank you, Ryan. Keisha, roll call?
Councilmembers Nicholas.
Yay.
Stalder.
Yay.
Thacker.
Yes.
Colvin.
Yay.
McCabe.
Yay.
Nestor.
Yay.
Okay, thank you, counsel, ordinance number 7134 has been adopted. Ryan, one more and we get to wrap this meeting up, I think. Ordinance number 7135.
Ordinance 7135 is an ordinance to authorize the city manager to amend the professional service agreement that we have with Champlin Porter Architects, um, or I'm sorry, Champlin Architects for the development of, uh, construction, um, administration services for the Sycamore Trails Aquatic Center. So, um, as counsel is aware, we have been working with, um, Champlin Architects, um, for the development of construction documents for the aquatic center, when we authorized that contract, it was, uh, to take us from construction documents through the bid process. Uh, we open bids tomorrow at 2 o'clock, so hopefully we'll get good news then. And so this is amending that contract to include the, uh, construction administration services. So it's $166,530 for that, um, scope of work, and that's really ensuring that the documents and the design that's been created is what actually gets built out into the real world. So it's, um, the, the, the plan set for this project is 140, 174 sheets of construction documents, and then the specifications book is 999 pages. So every time that a contractor says, okay, it's time to install the hand dryers, here's what we're getting ready to purchase to install, we have to go through the specifications document and confirm, yep, that is the correct thing that we said that we wanted. Um, and so that's, uh, Champlin's job in this process. Uh, the fees also include, a large percentage of the fees actually are going to Councilman Hunsacker, which is the aquatic engineer on the project, to ensure that the pools are actually constructed per specs, making sure that the concrete, uh, the lining, um, the watertightness, the piping, circulation, all of the things that we wanna make sure that we get right, um, during this process are done to spec and according to, to our intent. So, uh, that is the intent of this ordinance, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Alex, I'd have heard for you to, uh, tomorrow too.
I'll tell you tomorrow, three.
Okay, counsel, any further questions? In hearing then, the chair entertains a motion to dispense with the requirement that ordinance number 7135 be read on two separate days, authorize its adoption on this first reading, and have it read by title only.
So move.
Second.
Thank you, Tom and Ryan, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, Keisha?
Ordinance number 7135, an ordinance to authorize the city manager to amend the professional services agreement made with Champlin Architects for the development of construction documents for the Sycamore Trails Aquatic Center Improvement Project to include, and, to include construction administration services and declaring an emergency.
Okay, counsel, do I have a first and a second to pass ordinance number 7135?
So move.
Second.
Thank you, Ryan, thank you, Mike. Keisha, roll call?
Councilmember Stalder.
Yay.
Thacker.
Yes.
Colvin.
Yay.
McCabe.
Yay.
Nestor.
Yay.
Nicholas.
Yay.
Okay, thank you so much, Ryan, thank you. Ordinance number 7135 has been adopted. All right, it's the second meeting of the month, we can't start with the vice mayor down there, but we can start with Councilman Ryan Colvin, thanks for being here tonight.
Well, thank you very much, mayor, and, and thank you to the residents who came out tonight to, to tell their stories, and, and thank you to the representatives from, uh, Center Point also coming out. I think what we're relieved, what I'm relieved at this point is that we have the middle man out of the way, and Center Point representatives said tonight on the record that they will work with each and every affected, uh, property owner along the route of this pipe, and they said it tonight on the record, and we are going to hold them to that. Also, I wanna say a big thank you to all the members of Public Works who came out, so they didn't got the, uh, streets plowed, and that was, the winter storm event was a little bigger than we expected, and, um, the rain proceeding, it obviously made the, the Brian's solution stuff for that made it, uh, less effective and kind of put us a little behind the eight ball there, but, but they came through it, uh, when there was some, uh, slid out some rough, but, uh, thank you again for them coming out, uh, on their Sundays and stuff and to take care of our streets, really appreciate it. I also wanna recognize you gentlemen tonight, Mr. Rick Mountain and Mr. Jason. I also want to recognize you gentlemen tonight, Mr. Rick Mountain and Mr. Jason Shade, if all things hold, they will be taking the dice, taking the oath from Mayor Collins here at the early next year, end of this year, and so you guys got to see a little taste of, of your future tonight, so love them, gentlemen.
Thank you, Ryan. Counselman Mike McCabe.
My designated spokesperson did an excellent job again, I don't think I can add anything to that. So I'll just say, thank you, Mayor, that's it.
Thank you, Mike. Councilman Jeff Nestor.
Well, thanks to the people at Public Works and I actually had a phone call from a resident on South Heinecke that had an issue. Public Works went out and took care of it about a week and a half ago when it was raining, icy and everything, and she actually wanted the names of the people acknowledged, I've got a list here.
That's awesome.
The gentlemen were, Terry Roder, Daniel Holtzman, Nathan Reese, Ryan Link, Aaron Brown, and Ryan Lamb, and she wanted to make sure that they got acknowledged for their work, she said they were out there about six hours and there was ice dripping off of their hats or suits they were wearing and everything, wet suits, and she was very appreciative and couldn't thank me enough and she wanted to make sure the city manager knew it as well. So there.
Noted.
Done.
Thanks, Jeff. Councilwoman Sarah Thacker.
Thank you, ma'am. It's always nice to hear stories like that, Jeff, isn't it? I just appreciate the time everybody spent tonight, I know that the, the, there are citizens who came out, have been dealing with a lot of frustration for months and months and months. I started hearing about this, I think, back in October, and just trying to kind of figure out, I think, a lot of times, it's just assumed that the city knows about these things and is involved in them and has a lot of this information, and, and we didn't because this is not something that we sign off on. So I contacted Keith, he made some phone calls, got some information, started getting people in touch with Bob Stanley, who has been super helpful, everyone that I've talked to has complimented Bob and the work that he's done to try to help them resolve their problems, so thank you, Bob, for that. And it's just nice to see people come out and, and get their problems resolved. So it sounds like this project is going to go a lot smoother, hopefully, than what was originally conveyed, and I just appreciate the time that people took all along the way to try to put this together and, and resolve some of these fears for people and get them some answers. So to Keith and to Bob, thank you especially to those two for, for getting in touch with the right people and, and helping our citizens out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree. Councilman John Stalder.
Thank you, Mayor, I too agree with my fellow council, council members on it, I hope it's resolved, looks like it's going to be resolved. And I have one other thing, on February thirteenth at the Miami Valley Fire District meeting, I had the honor of swearing in two new firefighter paramedics, Hogan Parker and Logan Livase, and also the promotion of Lieutenant Jacob Warner, so wish them the best.
Was it Hogan and Logan?
There was Logan Livase, Hunter Parker.
Hunter, okay.
The two new firefighters, and then Jacob Warner was promoted to lieutenant.
Okay. All right, Councilman Nicholas.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Yes, I too would like to thank Center Point, obviously good, good turnout from the residents and it looks like we're at least in the direction of some cooperation, so that's great to hear. Last week, I was able to attend the second session of the land use plan for Old Central Avenue and was pleased with how that's progressing, there's various options, as, as those of you that are familiar with that area, I mean, the realignment of seven-twenty-five, I think, took place at about nineteen sixty-four, maybe, nineteen, early nineteen sixties, and so we've been dealing with that little section of Old Central, I shouldn't say little, section up the hill there for quite a while, but obviously it's, there's much more traffic and, and potential there now, but the potential needs to be used in the right way, so I, hats off to Andrew and the group that they're working with to hopefully come up with some good ideas, some good residence, residential turnout again for that meeting, and I know there's a third session, March eleventh, is that correct, Andrew? March eleventh at six-thirty at the library on Sixth Street. So if you want some additional info, I think at that third session, they're going to have some, some, at least some alternative proposals to present to the residents and, and to us as Counsel, so appreciate your work, Andrew. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, no, thank you, Tom. City Manager Keith Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor, just a couple of items tonight. On the topic of utilities, we have been working behind the scenes on a couple of projects that are going to be coming forward to Counsel here pretty soon. On the well-filled projects, you recall we purchased some property on the other side of the river, we've been designing two new well-filled, two wells to go in there, we have finished collecting the data, we should be in a position to probably go out to bid later this year with construction occurring next year, but that is an eight million dollar project. King Richard, which has been a, a, that water transmission main, has been a significant project that we've been looking at. We are in the process of doing some of the design work, obviously with what's going on in Washington, it actually is impacting this project because the federal funding has been frozen on this and the Diva loan that we use for these projects is part of that, so we're waiting to see what happens there before this project moves ahead, so we're hopeful, we're going to try to do as much as we can on this project before that loan is out there, but right now that loan is on hold until they figure out what's going on with those types of projects. Byers Road Tower, we'll hope to bid that later this spring with construction, maybe at the end of this year, early next year. By the way, the King Richard project is a twelve million dollars, it's a significant project, improvement project in that area for residents at home. Byers Road Tower needs to be redone, these towers typically last about twenty, twenty-five years, I know I've been around a long time when I remember when this one was done last, and this was one of the first towers that was redone, but we're hoping to go out to bid late spring with construction, maybe at the end of the year, early next year, that's about a million dollar project. And then on the wastewater end, we are reviewing proposals in-house right now, Counsel, if you recall, we authorized soliciting those proposals, we hope to perhaps bring you those here maybe within the next couple of meetings with a recommendation on awarding that. Mayor, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Keith. Thank you, Phil, for keeping us straight. Keisha, thank you for what you do. Thanks for all the staff that hung around, it was a long meeting. It's nice to see that residents feel like they're being heard and that they're going to be heard in the future when, I'm sure hiccups are going to occur, right? You can't do a project like that and things not happen. So at least now they got who they need to get in contact with. We're all, all of us MMA members are in the middle of planning our next Monte Carlo, which is always the first Friday in March, which makes it the seventh this year. If you want to donate your time, we could use that, if you have anything you want to donate to the auction, that'd be great, but coming and bidding and spending money is what we really need. So that is the MMA's largest fundraiser, which everyone knows MMA really is a great participant in having events downtown in conjunction with Parks and Rec and all the other people that help get things done down here. As a member of the Historical Society Board, we are having a special exhibit Saturday, this Saturday coming up, it's at one o'clock. It is for a Miami'sburg resident, his name is Bobby Korn, K-O-R, and apparently he is a race car driver, owns a race car vintage.
Owned one, worked on him, did racing a lot of.
Yeah.
Built a lot of cars for a lot of people.
And the Historical Society has made an amazing exhibit for it, so if you want to come out Saturday at one o'clock and help us celebrate that, kind of kick that off, I got an email from Ryan Colvin a couple days ago, which made me smile because Ryan is the head of, what am I thinking of, Ryan?
The American D.C. Historical Society.
Yeah, the Veterans Committee, and we're going to have a meeting tomorrow to talk about Memorial Day service, which means spring. Spring is in my email. So, no, that's, that's always a great event and Ryan keeps us all coordinated, so we get those off to a good start. Oh, I do have to tell everyone, we're going to go into study session tonight, study sessions are always open to the public, we hold them in council room chambers, where tonight we're going to talk about the Carnegie Center renovation and the Police Department facility improvements. So that will be on our study session agenda tonight, again, thanks to staff, thanks Detective for being here, thanks Mike Spironi in the back, and we'll go to study session.